It's 2020. I guess we don't have any public comment or anything like that. I'll just say that if anything goes wrong tonight, for anyone who's listening, we will continue this administratively to August 18th to complete our discussion or continue our discussion. Everyone's appearing remotely and we're recording. Joined by the ordinance subcommittee. Welcome. So I guess the first item on our agenda is amend section five table abuses and table five one to remove plan approval requirements for changes in use within existing buildings and with no significant changes to the exterior in the downtown business zoning district. So Jeff, we started this on our end, right, for the planning board, but do you want to give like a summary of what we're doing and how we got here?
Yeah, I would like to do that. I'm gonna share. What I'm trying to do over time is build a document that once there is agreement on the language that there'll be a packet that will go to the full city council once, once there's language. But in summary, this is an amendment that has been discussed before. It's a concept that my understanding is that there was discussion of kind of coming up with an administrative approval process back in 2017. Something that would make it a little bit easier for businesses to get into existing spaces. And you know, some of the technical terms are change in use. And in general, generally speaking, this is definitely a, you know, it's considered a best practice for a lot of communities to try to streamline the permitting process, make things a little bit more predictable. And then it's a way to, to support some economic development. And as the planning board members know, in the downtown area in particular, if, if a new use is occupying an existing building, that, that parking is not required to be provided on the property. And I think once you remove parking as an issue that is considered in front of the planning board, it really reduces the amount of things that become applicable. So, so that's kind of the precursor discussion. And then what really started to happen was at the beginning of March and on the onset of, you know, the pandemic, I'll be perfectly candid and I'll say that Puffer Printing Shop closed on Union Street and it, it just immediately opened up two storefronts that are kind of prime real estate. They don't need a lot of improvements to get new uses in, but unless you're another printing shop, you know, technically a new use would require coming to the planning board and getting plan approval. And in the cover memo, it really talks about how, you know, that could take approximately two months for an applicant to submit, have the public hearing and get a, get a decision. And not only that, it's, it's, you know, a hundred dollar application fee plus the cost of legal ad. And the cost of legal ad has just gone up and up and up. So for even a basic project, we're talking, you know, about $300 just for the legal advertisement in the paper plus the hundred. So in response to COVID, you know, I, I just professionally started to wonder what, what can we do to, to help support businesses? And then what, what actually is a little bit alarming is what started to happen is now that we have more vacancies in the downtown area that the goal of the amendment is to make it a little bit easier for new businesses to come back in. So there's a couple of technical things to go over. But the idea is similar to what the town of Amherst had done would be this footnote here. We have a series of footnotes in the table of uses already. So the proposal for discussion is that you would say that there's no plan approval required in those instances where a change in use is proposed. And there's no substantial physical changes other than signs. And there's no new zoning requirements that must be met. And so that's the idea of this. And I know that the planning board in their initial discussions had raised a couple of questions about what is substantial. And I think that's a really important part of the discussion. So in terms of new information, at the, and I sent this out this afternoon and it's posted online for people who are, who might be watching this some other way. Back at the initial meeting in June, we put together the kind of an unfortunate growing list of vacancies that we have. This is not the new information, but this is just to give a preview that there are several spaces on Main Street that are currently vacant and are very suitable for new uses. There are small businesses that could come and locate without significant changes. Even the Bank of America building has handicapped accessibility. It's got means of egress. So it's, it's a building that would be suitable for a new use to go in there. Union Street has the two spaces that were formerly occupied by Puffer. This is the building adjacent to Manchester Hardware, which has two means of egress here and it also has a back door. This building, the planning board did review this for a restaurant, but it is still currently vacant. On Cottis Street is the, the theater space is a, is a space that's vacant, but is currently, you know, it's ready for a tenant. I think the owner is currently talking to potential tenants there. And then the newer ones are the space on Upper Cottis Street and then the space on the, in actually the same building. So in terms of what kinds of changes we would, we might expect to see without planning board approval. This is the space, the top picture was a, was a retail store for smoking paraphernalia. So it was like a head shop. And when they, when they left, the planning board went through the process to review the Poke Bowl, which is essentially a restaurant. So this is really a change in use where there's no substantial change other than signs. And so this is one of the key examples that we're trying to allow to come through in a more streamlined manner. I kind of was poking around a little bit and the next picture is some ADA. So Americans with Disabilities Act requires, you know, handicapped accessibility. So in, I did speak with the building commissioner and his, his request was to make sure that we don't, we don't want to necessarily create a permitting process for people that are going to make ADA upgrades. Because there are certain protections that they have. So this is back of Manchester. The, there wasn't exit here, but they've been making improvements. And this is a kind of an example of some ADA improvements. The next photo, you know, things that we might again, expect to see that the planning board might not review would be ventilation or mechanicals. So this is not the best photo, but this is the side and back of Luthier's Co-op. So they install the kitchen. And often with kitchens and restaurant uses comes some mechanicals. So I think the note here is that this would be regulated by the health department, the fire department and building code. And I think it's the type of use, the type of thing that you might see happen. And lastly, this is in a, like a kind of an ongoing example of potential facade changes where there's no change in the footprint. And we might expect people to make some improvements that are not necessarily substantial. So this is on Upper Cottis Street. The picture on the top shows that the space used to be some kind of apartment with a door and windows and it's kind of barricaded up. And then this is a picture from the other day. So they, they converted this actually back to commercial retail space. And from a design perspective, this is actually really desirable as it's activating a space. But it is, you know, a change that we should talk, whether you would think that that's substantial, but that might be the kind of example. And finally, and I'll stop for questions, obviously, that there are some where, where we're trying to draw the line. So this is the outdoor dining behind the bistro. So this might be an example where it would be substantial. It is a physical change to the site and it could change the, the nature of the use. And so we do want to think about this kind of proposal would, would maybe still be subject to plan approval. And then I did look around town and this was really one of the only ones that I could actually see that, you know, is a kind of a substantial change that, that would warrant some review. And then below are the three properties that we, we do expect there to be some changes to. The very bottom picture is actually something that the planning board did approve. A, you know, demolition of the garage spot with a new building. I mean, that's clearly going to fall under planning board. And then upper left here is Hurry Scurry, which we do anticipate some activity happening. Ultimately, most likely the building will be demolished and reconstructed. And that's, that's just definitely substantial and it would go to planning board. And then the other one that comes up a lot in conversation is at the top corner of Union Street. It's hard to see in this picture, but it's the Moriarty Building. It's vacant and unless someone tries to fit stuff in there, we do expect like, maybe this would be a project that would be substantial. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. And I'll stop and obviously ask some, answer some questions.
I think Tom, Tom, were you raising your hand before?
Yeah, I was, but I think my question has basically been answered. I was, I was just trying to get a sense of if a kitchen wasn't substantial, what would be? And it sounds like what you're saying is that a substantial change would be something that that really affects like the footprint of the site.
I think that that's one of the questions that we should have some discussion with. I think what we can do between this meeting and sending something to city council is formulate a memo, sort of the cover memo and this, this document is kind of that edited, it will be the edited version going forward. And we can start to create some legislative intent. So for people in the future to have some gauge. Or we can talk about adding some more language. And I think, you know, I think Jesse had previously talked about maybe adding more language to this to clarify it. And I think that's, I believe that that might be the finest point that we want to put on this change is kind of, what is substantial?
Well, I think if we leave it the way it is now, right, substantial would be defined by the building inspector, right? They're either going to say you can have a building permit or not. You have to go to the planning board for site plan approval. That, that's the process, right, Jeff?
Generally speaking, yep.
And then if someone disagreed with that, if someone said, whoa, how can this not be substantial? They'd appeal that building inspector's issuance of the permit or that decision to the ZBA, I think, maybe planning board too. And there would be a hearing to challenge that, but only if someone challenged it in that narrow window, I think. And so I'm not sure. I mean, I think we can leave it the way it is with substantial and we can say as much as we want about what that means. But you know, 10 years down the road, whoever's building inspector may not have this memo in front of him or her and it won't matter, right? So that's the only thing I think we need to think about is are we just leaving this as sort of a discretionary decision like many others that a building inspector makes? Or do we want to like itemize, it's only substantial if it changes the footprint? Or I think Tom, I think your point about a kitchen is a fair one. I mean, I don't know. I don't know where I fall in it personally, but I certainly think you can make a pitch that adding a commercial kitchen into an otherwise non-kitchen equipped space is substantial. But I, I mean, our site plan approval is pretty limited. That was the other thing I was pulling up. Just so city councillors and the public can be aware, you know, our list of things that we consider when we grant site plan approval or not is the first one is conformance with basically city and state laws. That's an obligation all the time. Protecting city amenities like important natural scenic or historic features of the site. So that hardly doesn't have anything to do with downtown where you can't really change that anyway. Safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement. Almost all these, I mean, the irony is the places that have existing parking and Jeff, when you and I talked about this months ago, like it's almost if you already have parking that we want to look at it more closely, which is, is probably not the way to think about it, but that's the only part there that would really impact it. Disposal of sewage and trash, you know, we talk about that, but every business has to do that somehow. Protecting wetlands and watersheds, that's not going to change. Effect on the city's water supply. We have some businesses that have come in where we've sort of had to ask about that. You know, issues like commercial, commercial greenhouses for cannabis or things like that, that might have an inordinate use, like we've inquired about that. Off-street loading and unloading of vehicles. Usually that's a topic that we bring up just to ask what people are doing, but they're going to get their deliveries however they can. And then it's like existing landscape, removal of vegetation and setback area placement of parking, like it's not very many things that really come into play on 99% of the downtown business stuff, but it would, this change would let some things sort of go more smoothly, which I think is the design, but it also will let some minor things slip through the cracks conceivably. It's just a balancing act. And it's just a matter of what planning board members want to recommend and what city council is comfortable voting on. Yeah, Jim?
I want to corroborate that and just kind of go in on the record as agreeing. Jeff, I love the idea of loosening things up a little bit to promote business. I think it's really important in this time and I think that our community and our streets, our downtown needs it. I do know that at several of the special permits that, that you referenced with pictures, there were neighbors that were very concerned about some things. The gas station. Some didn't have as much, you know, kickback like, like the bistro that you showed in there. But in all cases, the possibility for kickback exists. And I think that we just want to be cautious in finding that balance, just like Jesse just demonstrated. But overall, I think that, that this is a time for us to loosen that up a little bit. Now, I was a little bit curious in the beginning of the document that you showed about the exact language that we might be using here. And I'm wondering if you could maybe, I, I mean, you were just highlighting things, areas of change. I'm not sure we have exact language yet. But I, I still remain just a little bit fuzzy on whether the intention is for us to identify specifically changes that we need to make in the zoning. Or if you're kind of prompting along the changes that need from that document.
Yeah, I can try to take a shot of clarifying that. I appreciate the need to clarify that. So before I share my screen, I mean, the idea is that anything that currently requires plan approval, so it's a PA in the use table for the downtown, would get a footnote that says if there are no substantial changes to the site or the building, then no plan approvals required. I mean, if the footnote is the tool we're trying to use, so I'll, I'll put it back up. The amendment is pretty easy. It adds some language that would be the footnote and then you would apply the footnote along the uses. And so the document that is prepared is really more illustrative of what areas it would interact with. So again, here is the section that has footnotes. And then no plan, this would be the language unless we decide to change it. This is the language that we would be proposing with the number 10. And then this, the mechanism is if you go up to the use table where it says DB and these PAs, that's where we would add the footnote would go next to each of these PAs.
We talk about substantial.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the kicker to this whole thing, right? It all comes down to one word. So what is substantial?
And you know, it is there. So this is, it says substantial physical changes. And we are clearly exempting signs. Where, so, so where no substantial physical changes will occur to the site or building and where no newer additional requirements of the zoning ordinance must be met for the proposed use. So there is the intent to say that if there's something else that gets triggered in terms of the zoning, it would kick it back to the plan, plan review process.
Is there precedence for the use of substantial?
Well, we use it, you know, we make that determination on modifications, right, Jim? Like on a special permit, we get those administrative hearings where someone comes in and says, you know, I think INSA came in and added 1,000 square feet of gross space. And we have to determine if it's substantial, it's got to be remarked for a hearing. They got to publicly notice it. And we get public comment, but if it's not, we can approve it as a minor modification. So it's comparable to that.
We're not involved in this process though, right? I mean, basically it becomes a building.
Yeah, it'd be the building inspector making that decision. And, and so I think that's the question is, is how much? I mean, it, it's comparable to the modification though, because we, we don't give a butter's notice for that for them, for the, if it's ministerial. And so, I mean, what we're determining at that administrative hearing is does this need to go to the public and have them hear about it? Which is what I think this would be more comparable to. But I mean, there's, there's a lot of discretion building inspectors have in general on sort of issuing building permits versus saying you need a variance or a permit or something. And so it happens behind the scenes most of the time. I think your point is a good one though, that even these ones where nothing happens, I think there's a benefit that we should acknowledge when the public and the neighbors get to come out and ask questions. And oftentimes, you know, Jim, you actually ask this all the time. Have you talked to your neighbors? Is this the first time, you know? And it's often the first time they've ever met or discussed things and, and problems get solved right there. Whether that's worth, you know, a two month delay and a $500 expense, I think is the question, but I mean, there'll be something lost for sure. Yeah, Brenda.
I'm, I'm wondering, did you talk to the building inspector and get his thoughts on this? Would that be appropriate? And/or I'm also thinking you might be able to attach, I mean, depending on what he thinks. If it's a pearl permit for plumbing and electrical exceeding a certain amount, you know, and he could help figure out what that amount is that, that would represent substantial changes, you know, $500 electrical work to move a few outlets. I don't think that counts as substantial, but a $15,000 permit for electrical work, you know, involving installing a new kitchen, you know, maybe then it could trigger it. I just, what do you think about that?
I think, I wanted to assure you that I did talk to the building inspector. I mean, you know, he says that for existing buildings, there's three levels of construction. And I think he says that which depend upon the level, depending on the level is what determines if they need to be brought up to building code. He says, he doesn't think that we want to tie the zoning. Sorry, I'm trying to, it's not the clearest. He's, okay. So he says, I don't think that we want to tie the zoning into that being tied, zoning to the building code thresholds, because I think it's going to become a little bit confusing. The ideas about footprint and uses are good. So I know that there's one way we can talk about this, which is, you know, that there are no changes in the footprint. So I think that's kind of, maybe that's language that we want to be clear about that. I think the, the biggest benefit for our downtown is if uses can occupy the existing space and they're really just doing interior work. I mean, I think we, we find, we find over and over again that if they're just doing an interior renovation, you know, that's where we definitely want to give them the, the leeway. There's something that hasn't really come up yet, which is trying to make sure that this is a little bit equitable. So I think over the past several years, I think that there have been cases that have been kicked to the planning board. Because the zoning kind of says it, it happens. And then there are other cases where it just doesn't happen for whatever reason. So we do want to try to make this a more level playing field for people so that it's clear. So what I'm going to try to do here is share the screen again. So this is really the language that we're, this is what was in the memo. I mean, the advertisement is just to remove plan approval requirements. So what we want to try to figure out if, if it's possible tonight, if there's some way we can work through this and be ready to send it to city council. I think it's really where it says in no substantial physical changes, it's this in, in parentheses here, other than signs. I think this is where we make our first attempt to clarify some stuff. So right? So I mean, I don't know if this is on the spot, what we want to try to do, if we have some ideas to come up with some language here, or whether we think we need more time to get through it.
Sorry, Jim, you first and then Tom.
I was wondering, it seems like where you're headed with this is to try and put specific instances, kind of make a list. And I'm wondering if maybe it's just easier to go up where it says, and no substantial physical changes as determined by the building inspector.
I mean, I think that is one way to do it. It just, it definitely pushes all the discretion over there without any, you know, without any guidance unless we, unless we include the, we want to do two things with this is we want to give the building inspector some guidance and we also want to be able to give applicants some guidance so that they have an understanding when they kind of breeze through the zoning like, oh, there are some, there's something about a footprint increase that's going to trigger me here.
Maybe both, you know, I mean, if there's, put something in about the footprint, but also kick, I, I just, I worry about making a giant list here. That's all.
I agree, Jim. And I think there's going to have to be a lot of discretion given to the building inspector, like there already is on this kind of thing either way. Tom?
Yes. First of all, I realized that the first two times I read this, I missed the word building exterior. I just, I sort of skimmed over the word exterior and just saw the building, which is I think why I asked the question about kitchens was, it's like, that seems like a huge thing, but it's interior. So that makes a lot of sense to me now. And for the record, I think this is, this is a really cool idea and I generally support it. The one thing I, just my sort of like paranoid side wants to just sort of air is what happens, you know, if, if we're, and I think Jesse, you made a good point that we already in these cases, the, the building inspector has a lot of leeway. I guess what I'm wondering is if there were a project or a, a business that came into town that maybe was kind of politically sensitive for one reason or another, people had some strong feelings about it. And there was, let's say they, they either, either their change was determined that it, that it was substantial and they had to go through this process. Or that it was determined that it wasn't substantial and they didn't have to go through this process. And there was some sense that, that the reason why that decision was made, that they weren't being treated fairly, they were either being given too much leeway or too little leeway. Do you feel like that the, the, the process that would be there for somebody to object to that is, is robust?
So that's what I was saying before. In, in most towns, I think East Hampton too, if you, like, you can appeal a building inspector's decision to the zoning board of appeals and you can do that on any sort of building permit, but it's a pretty tight window. I don't remember what the timeline is. But you, you often could not even know that a building permit had been issued. Especially if we're talking about downtown business where it might be all interior. I think the flip side of that is that, I mean, the process does exist. So if people were motivated and paying attention, they could certainly get it in front of somebody else's eyes. But also that there, the, the number of uses that are, that would be covered by this are pretty much all, I mean, I don't want to say they're unobjectionable because they're unobjectionable until they're right next to your house or something, but they're, they're pretty vanilla uses. Like there aren't a lot of controversial things on here. Like, like I don't think this applies to like, well, it does apply to a bar. I mean, I would say a bar could be controversial depending on what neighborhood you're in. You know, I mean, so there's, it, it's a fair point that, that there's, there's the potential for, for something to happen without people knowing. I guess there's the same potential under site plan approval, but they would have at least had to ignore a, an a butter's notice instead of be tracking something on their own.
There's something there though, which I, I'm not sure it's relevance though, is that we are talking about plan approval. So if you do look at case law over time for, for site plan approval, you know, what, what they say generally in that's a series of cases is that it's, it's difficult to deny a use that is determined in the zoning to be plan approval. You are looking at the very nuts and bolts of how things are put together on a site. So if you have a use that, and, and Tom, I think, you know, by and large, we're trying to, I think what you're maybe considering is uses that might be objectionable. And what we're trying to look at is the exterior of the building is not going to go through a lot of change. I think, you know, if you have a use that's objectionable, it's going to be very hard to deny it through site plan approval. And so that's one of the, one of the goals here is that these are supposed to be considered kind of normal and expected uses in the downtown area. So what we're trying to do is narrow that scope to if they can fit in that building, you know, we, we suspect that you know, we, we suspect that the impacts will be pretty low. I mean, I'll say a couple of things really candidly, which is, I can pull up the list of uses. I, I just want to be clear because I think we, we did talk about cannabis, you know, we're talking about cannabis later. A cannabis retailer is a special permit from the planning board in the zoning now. So there are a couple of uses that are not included in this. And I know that we have a lot of debate about not thinking about cannabis differently, but I think in terms of some, if, of its nuance nuances, you know, that is still not, that would not be part of this proposal because it's a different use cut. It's a different permitting requirement. You know, I think we need to try to have some trust in the building inspector as they go. You know, I'm just trying to parse out what Tom said is like something that might be objectionable to people is likely not going to be changing a window to a door or changing a window to a door and, and that sort of thing, or putting up signs. So, you know, the things that people are going to object to might not really ever get dealt with by the planning board anyway. I mean, I, I don't know. I, I will yield, I think someone had their hand, I think it was Austin.
Yeah, Austin.
I'm convinced.
Yeah. So Jesse, you had said that if there was a bar proposed, but this is only for the downtown business district, I'm understanding. So do you still feel that a bar proposed anywhere in the downtown business district could be caused for an issue? Because I thought you had said the whole city.
No, I'm just saying that, you know, it's, it's easy for me to say that a theoretical bar coming in is unobjectionable until, I mean, I, I live two houses away. I can see the 413 from my house right now and I know what it's like to have a bar on your street and there's incredible pros and incredible cons. And so I, I would never say to someone, it's no big deal. You know, it, it does it, to me, it doesn't include the same thing as a restaurant or a store or things like that. It's a little bit later sometimes. But that's really the only thing I can think of on there. And it's really only for people that live adjacent to the downtown business zone. And that's kind of what you're in for when you buy here.
Yeah. And you're saying in the example of 413, I mean, that's.
That was here when I bought. Yeah. That, that's a pre-existing business and it is what it is. I think Jeff's point about the role of site plan approval is a good one, too, that, you know, in special permits, we can actually vote things down. You really can't with site plan approval. We can, I mean, if it's a reasonable condition, you can condition things out of existence, kind of, and that can be upheld. But it really has to be logical and rational. And so usually it's just us fashioning conditions, you know? And a lot of it is sort of voluntary give and take with the, with the business owner, too, that it's just easier for them to do that than to cause more problems. But it, it, it is true. I mean, there, there's, it's easy to say something is or isn't objectionable, but like the zoning in general has sort of determined that these are already less objectionable uses in this zone by permitting them just with site plan approval. Brenda?
Well, with the way around that to be maybe not put the footnote to number 13 restaurants and bars? I mean, or is that too odd and people would say, why is it on everything else but not a bar? But if there is some sensitivity around bars, we could just take that off the footnote list.
Let's run a quick example, if you don't mind.
Jeff, Jeff, Salem had his hand raised for a sec.
Well, I was, I was just going to say, but you know, this is more about like alterations to this, this space. Like you wouldn't necessarily be reviewing the use. Am I, am I incorrect? Maybe we would, if you guys got this, this would be reviewing all, like, changes, physical changes.
You're totally right, Salem. Like, it, it's probably one of those things that falls into what Jim was saying earlier about sort of like the benefit that happens when people can come out and talk to the business owner. But it's probably not a problem. I mean, we, we can't really control hours of operation the same way, especially with a bar that has like a liquor license, but we have some control over that. You know, if neighbors complain, maybe an applicant agrees, you know, we'll close at 11 every night. We've had a couple of bars and restaurants that came, like Luthiers, there was a big thing with how late they would perform and whether you, they'd use, you know, amplification and stuff on certain nights and what times, but like, you're right. I mean, most of what we, I mean, the, the considerations I told you, I mean, it's, it's not, you know, how many people are going to be outside smoking a cigarette at one in the morning? Like, that's outside of our, it's outside everyone's jurisdiction, but it is true. Like, that's, that's not really going to come into our, into our decision anyway.
I was going to try a quick example, if that's okay. And I'm just navigating the share screen option. So we don't, I'm not trying to project the long term because that's hard, but in the near term, you know, we, we look through the list of, we look at some of these locations. And some of them are going to be conducive to bars or restaurants and some of them are not. So you know, I think, I think maybe Brenda's on to something. I think it's a, it's a little bit more nuanced. But if you look at the Bank of America building on Main Street, you know, that would be definitely a potential space for a restaurant or a bar. So we have to look at, you know, in the downtown business district, parking is not, you know, required to be onsite. There is some parking. So you might, you might have some conversations about parking there. The other one I wanted to point out was the, was the, the theater space on Cottage Street. So it's the center space. It's got kind of double doors and then it goes into the large area. And there are, there's an emergency egress out the back. So, you know, they have occupancy, you know, they have a large occupancy number. So that's kind of a, it's definitely ripe for that kind of use. If we want to potentially go through that list, that table, if the group thought that that might be of merit to kind of look through the list of uses briefly and see, you know, if you can kind of just imagine a couple of those going through a process or not a process. And I don't know if people are willing to kind of consider that, the application of the footnote with a little bit more precision.
I just have a question. If, if the use is allowed, what's the concern? I mean, other than maybe the bar that may be sensitive or the restaurant issue? If it's a use that's allowed, and when we said, you know, you can't change the footprint or, you know, nothing, no substantial changes other than signs, what's the concern? Because if it's not, if the use isn't allowed, it's, it would come to us or they couldn't even do it. So I, I'm thinking it's, it's kind of okay. If, if, if it's a legal use, it's a legal use. Why put them through, you know, $400 or $500 and take up, you know, Jeff's time and the building inspector's time more so than they already do? You know, even if it's objectionable, if it's allowed, it's allowed. I mean, so this is what I, that's where I'm at right now. I was originally all for, no, we need more details about substantial, but now I'm like, wait a minute. I was getting hung up on the use thing and the use thing is kind of already covered.
Yeah, the use part is addressed. I mean, the interesting part about this, I think what Jim said at the beginning is that it's not really our role, but that when you have the hearings, it does sort of facilitate a conversation with your neighbors, but I don't know that that's something that we really need to facilitate as a city. And that, that, that's the hard part. You're right. And from, from our like actual job when these things come before us, it's usually kind of like a routine situation. What are you doing about trash and snow removal? You know, be thought about how you're going to do your deliveries. And other than that, there's not much we really do. Hours of operation occasionally for someone that's going to be like open at night.
Well, is, I mean, in your experience, for all of you who have been doing this for some time, is there value in those conversations? I mean, maybe we shouldn't do this. I, I haven't been doing this long enough to know, you know? Is there value in the public notice? Is there value in those conversations? You know, what would get missed if, if we weren't having those conversations with new business owners? And what would get missed for them? I mean, things they don't know about that then become the burden of the building inspector to deal with because people are complaining. Snow removal, trash, you know, I don't know.
Well, I think the only, the only, I, I see Austin, sorry. You know, there are other departments, not just the building inspector. So the Board of Health and the Health Department will regulate, you know, all kinds of interior functions, so bathrooms, cleaning areas and things like that. And then the Fire Department looks at, you know, life safety issues, so emergency egress and emergencies, exit signs and, and then the building inspector looks at some things like occupancy and things. May chair, to the two chairs, maybe we address Austin. And then maybe we do quick breeze through the list of uses because I think once we do that, actually, there are quite a few that we would probably find not objectionable. And I, I, I don't want to single any use out, but maybe the restaurants and bars is the one really complicated one that we would see there.
Yeah. Austin, what do you got?
Yeah, just, just bouncing back to Jesse, I've heard hours of operation, noise, food and alcohol. What is your, what is your thought on over, overcoming that, those four points in this conversation? I mean, that, that seems like it's a difficult thing to get past.
Is, yeah. Jim, what do you think?
I'd like to add odor.
Right. Yeah, that's a good point. And I mean, I do think a lot of those things, I mean, we can go through the uses, Jeff, but you are right that, I mean, I think all those things largely revolve around restaurants and bars. Maybe with the exclusion of other things. Yeah, Jim?
I, I don't want to go off in a different direction here, Jeff, so put me back on the rails, but I'm, I'm still kind of in favor of, of really offloading a lot of this onto the building inspector, but you rightly said we should give some guidance. And maybe if we just sort of note those things, issues that may pertain to noise, alcohol, food, odor, may be considered substantial and just like put that in your footnote as a comma. And we, we could just kind of make a list of those things and maybe that's enough.
Yeah, this is where it gets complicated in that, you know, the building inspector will, things like footprint, right? So if someone needs to expand the buildings, very straightforward. Beyond that, I think that we have to be more specific to a use. If, if we want to, I think, I'm, I'm, you know, like, I don't think that they're going to have enough information at a building permit to determine that kind of stuff. I'm going to flash this up if it's okay. So the way the table of uses is broken up is that there's a section at the top, which I'm going to skip for now because it's really kind of a bunch of protected uses. And we talked about protected uses before, but it's a lot of stuff we might not even ever see downtown. Well, I, we can flashback to it if we need to, but this is the retail and service category. And so, you know, the first one, convenience market is not highlighted because it's the SPB. So that's already a special permit by the planning board. So along the way, historically, probably in the 1995 zoning amendment, there was a big zoning amendment in 95. It was probably determined at that point that convenience market would be a special permit. Then below that, it's like a discount store, hardware paint store, factory outlet store, antique gift shop, shop of a potter sculptor, jeweler, artist, weaver, similar craft person pharmacy, drugstore, furniture store. So if you really think about Cottage Street in particular, we have, we have a little, actually Cottage Union, we have some of those. So we, anything with stores and retail that's going to bring people out and about in town is actually something that's really desirable. And I professionally speaking, can't really see any significant issues coming from noise, odor, or hours of operation of any of those, just off the, you know, kind of going through them rather quickly. But then we go down, I did miss the highlight for supermarket, which is the first one here, which is plan approval. But we need to keep in mind that we're talking about a use that would occupy an existing space without substantial changes. So there are very, very few spaces that in, in, in downtown that would fit a supermarket with no substantial changes. And I think the example would be Biggie's. So if, if another supermarket wanted to occupy Biggie's space, you know, that, you know, if we, if we applied the footnote here, then, then there would be no permit process for that. So maybe this is one, if we did kind of target some uses that may should not be included, maybe supermarket's one of them. But all, all of the retail establishments is the catchall for any kind of retail. And I think one of the things that we see that's special about the downtown is trying to encourage retail. And then there's number 13 here, which is, I think, the one that would be of importance. Restaurant and bars, not including drive-in or drive-through. So you can't have a drive-in or drive-through in the downtown. It's not allowed, but the regular restaurant or bar could be plan approval. And then bakery, deli, butcher shop, fish market, caterer, or production and sale of food and beverage. So you look at Corcello Butcheria or Small Oven, even the bistro. Like, I think the question is, do we want to streamline the process for those types of uses, which are distinguished from restaurants and bars here? And then you can't sell used automobiles, you know, it's not allowed. And then I do think bed and breakfast here, I think I missed, would be plan approval. But you don't allow, you could allow a motel. So that's another one. Sorry, I missed, I missed a couple of these. An auto service station. So there's a few. The automobile repair garage with three bays or more. So I don't know. If, and then the rest of this, it, then it switches out of that retail and service category in the zoning. So it's really this section.
Jeff, I don't think you missed those ones. I think those were highway business, not downtown business.
Jump over?
I think so, on that last page.
Oh, good. Thank goodness. I was wondering why that, that struck me as really odd. Hotel is the one.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom?
But like even, you know, I think a hotel, but with this, by the same logic as a supermarket, like, if you're talking about a space that's actually big enough to accommodate that sort of thing, probably people wouldn't have a problem with it. And, and beyond that, you know, when I was looking at those lists, I, I kind of was thinking, I, I, I think I'm kind of, what, what people were talking about Luthiers and that whole thing, like, there really is like a separate process, you know, through the, like, the, through liquor licensing and all that, where neighbors can have, you know, can express any, any sort of issues that they're having with a restaurant or a bar generally, right? Am I, would you agree with that statement?
There is. I think it's a little less. It, it depends on the town, but I think it's often a little less, not welcoming, but it's not really usual that I think you have as many sort of neighbors come out and sort, I mean, we get a lot of neighbors that come out, especially for things like that, that are just listening about the project for the first time, right? I think a liquor license board tends to attract people who are already kind of mobilized against something, but it is another avenue for people to complain for sure.
The one, the one good thing about, I would say that's a little bit different than liquor license than, than the planning board is their authority to revoke or suspend a license. You know, if, if there was a sort of, you know, like, let's say, three, three, three accounts of underage drinking, you know, the planning board, no offense, the planning board, like, planning board is going to have no jurisdiction over that. But the licensing commission, the license authority would be talking about suspending that license. And that's, you know, those have true impacts financially. And they're more like, a little bit more like a razor because they could call an applicant in and they could, they could be reprimanding them. So, you know, you get back to like hours of operation. So that might be something. But at a certain point, you would, the planning board might rub up against some challenges if, if you have a bar that can operate until 2:00 AM through the liquor license authority and then the planning board saying close at 11:00, like, that could be taking away some pretty important revenue from that company. So that might be, that might be a condition that would be maybe challenging to get through, right, with an applicant. I'm just trying to think about that. I will cease the conversation. I don't know if other people have opinions about restaurants. I mean, I think that's kind of the biggest type of use that maybe could occupy an existing building that might have some impacts.
Tom, you have something else?
And I, I guess this is a follow-up. I'm just trying to make sure I understand this process. So say I wanted to open up a bar in the puffer sign space, right? And we haven't implemented this yet, or we exempt, we exempt rest or bars. So, so I still have to go through this whole thing. And I'm not making any, any, what we're calling substantial changes. And it goes up, if, if, if it's just a plan approval, you know, if neighbors show up to say, well, we don't like this, is there, like, that, that's not like, you're not going to be like, well, we'll deny this plan approval because there's somebody who doesn't want you to have it.
We can impose conditions, that's it. So like, we often, I mean, we did a lot of this with Luthiers and there was another place that did live music that has since gone. that has since gone, I can't remember, that was in the downtown business that came in first. Um, it might have actually been like the Havardashery or somewhere, somewhere that was going to do music lessons. And so we've, we've limited hours pretty, pretty, I mean, almost over objection from applicants a couple of times about that, about either using amplification or when they could have live music. Um, and that has been the most contentious, especially in some of those sort of awkward situations where there's a, a music venue in a residential building, right? I mean, these are apartment buildings too, so, um, that gets a little bit dicey. But yeah, I mean, like I said, there's no way to just say no. We can't say no to a site plan approval, we can just put conditions on. And so, I mean, it, there certainly are conditions we could put on a bar or a restaurant, but it's not like we're going to veto it.
Okay, uh, thanks. Then, I mean, that, that just sort of drives it home to me that I, I think, I don't think we should be leaving bars and restaurants out necessarily.
Treat them all the same.
Just treat them all the same. If some, if there's an issue with noise, they can deal with the liquor board.
And if somebody disputes that the building inspector determined that this wasn't substantial, they'll have a window to appeal the building inspector's decision. If they somehow don't know about it, they'll deal with it after the fact, trying to do it some other way. That's the hard part, is if you don't know in advance, but.
Well, I can say, you know, my father, uh, you know, ha, owns a bar in Northampton and has been called before the liquor board because people, you know, he had DJ in there playing music and someone in the neighborhood thought it was too loud and they, you know, th- they, they went through the process of resolving that dispute there.
Yep. It's definitely an option. Jim?
I really like what everyone is saying and I just, I want it, I thought about it a bit and I just want to acknowledge what just came through my head. This is a sacrifice. We're ceding authority to promote growth. Um, and, and that's tough because we don't want to let any citizen down. But promoting growth requires that we open up these avenues, uh, for business. So I think that, I think it's the right move to, to let, as you said, the liquor board or the other board. And normally we have a lot of teeth and the fact that they come to us first, we can stop in advance. And now we're kind of stopping it after the fact with a, a little less, uh, authority. And, but I still think in this case it's worth it. I think Jeff, your initiative in going forward is good and I think we should all push forward to relinquishing this.
Chris or Harry, either of you guys have thoughts that you want to share? No pressure if you don't.
No, just a minor edit to the, what Jeff was writing up, but I'll wait until we get to that point. Sorry, it's the technical writer in me.
Harry, how about you? What do you think?
Well, what are we concerned about? You know, we're, we're concerned about the fee or the cost?
Both.
Well, we just eliminate the sp, uh, the cost then.
Well, there's a lot of work, I mean, that's the thing is that, the reason we have the fees is because we've got city employees that are doing a lot of work for each one of these things. So it's, it's a way to sort of offset the amount of staff time that gets spent when there's an application filed.
I thought you were going to say all in favor of Jeff working for free, say aye, but I guess I was wrong.
Well, i- i- I appreciate Jesse's response too. I mean, I, you know, it's, the, I, our fees are low, very low. The fee that is getting people the most is the requirement, um, for site plan approval requires publication in the Gazette for two consecutive weeks. It's the legal advertisement and that, I, I have to be honest, I mean, that's the killer. Um, and the Gazette continues to raise those costs for applicants. So just that blurb in the newspaper, that's three hundred and fifty bucks. Um, and, you know, that can be, you know, on top of everything else. And, and the one thing we didn't even mention is like plan prep. So the, the benefit of an, for an applicant is, um, like Tom's proposal to come in and establish a bar at the Puffers shop. So the requirement to get to the playing board, like, I can't ju, I don't just accept a piece of paper. So I usually work with them, they, they have to have a architect onboard and have the architect drawing plans sort of upfront before the, before the planning board process. It's going to the planning board during that unknown stage. Most applicants don't really want to, you know, finish that process until they get the approval in hand. And then they bring, you know, the architect back in to continue consulting with the building inspector to finish all that. So, you know, on one level, like, the, there are some potential impacts with restaurants, but also there's actually a lot of more, a lot more upfront costs and, you know, the architect is almost um, absolutely necessary to get through all the other code requirements. So just the one thing I, I do want people to rest assured that, and I think this is the message, kind of like a council too, a full council is, um, you know, the licensing authority has a lot of, um, control over, over restaurants and bars. Anything that has alcohol for sale and consumption, you know, can be, it can be rigorous. Um, and then, you know, the other codes are going to be triggered. So that covers almost everything except sort of that outside, you get like, what change could happen on the building? And we're really saying that it should be pretty minimal. And then the only other thing is parking. And so that's really kind of the, the connector for me is that, um, we're, we don't require parking for these uses to go in existing buildings. And so, you know, odor, um, is a health department issue anyway, you know, I don't, I don't respond to odor complaints. And then I do think that like dumpsters and trash and recycling do get regulated. So if a dumpster is placed in a bad spot or is overflowing, you know, it's going to be the, it's going to be probably the health agent and the health department who are going to respond to that. So a lot of this gets covered through other, um, other codes and requirements and departments. So I think it's a.
So, you know, I, I feel, I feel pretty comfortable, um, with the, the revised, uh, like, looking at the footprint of the building. Cause I, you know, I agree with Jeff that the other agencies are going to do their due diligence to kind of address the things that would be most, um, you know, obnoxious to neighbors. And, and I also think that this, you know, this is us being proactive as we have like a, a significant number of empty storefronts. Like, we don't want to end up with that stagnation and, and that turns into blight. You know, and, and we don't want to be, uh, having a dead downtown. So I think this little bit of, you know, relinquish, relinquishing a little bit of control here has a potential very positive benefit, just as like, uh, uh, the way it looks to potential people that are going to come to East Hampton. Like, they're ready to do business with us and, and I think that's a positive message for us to be sending. Uh, and I think the, the downsides are pretty minimal. So that's really all I have to say on this one.
I agree, Salem. Harry, yeah?
Who's going to be the, uh, have the final say on, uh, but, but if a place needs a special permit or not, who's going to be the person or persons that was going to determine whether they have to come before the planning board or not? Who's that going to be?
Well, so that's the building inspector, that's what we're saying. So if it, if the building inspector determines that a change is substantial, they would tell an applicant, you gotta go get site plan approval from the planning board. And that applicant could either come get site plan approval or they could appeal that decision to the ZBA, both of which probably would cost about the same amount of money, so it's probably worth it to just come get your site plan approval. But, yeah, I mean, that's the discretion that we're giving to a building inspector, which we give a lot of discretion to building inspectors. They're pretty sharp and qualified in this stuff. Um, anybody else with anything? Otherwise, I want to open it up. We do have a few members of the public here that may or may not want to talk. All right, so if there's anybody listening or watching who wants to talk, you can either raise your hand if you're on video or if you can do the virtual hand raise on Zoom, or I think star nine on your phone will do a virtual hand. All right, doesn't look like anything. So Jeff, where do, where do we want to go from now? Jim, you got a question first?
Well, I was, you know, I mean, we seem to have some language that Jeff has, and I was wondering if we just want to make a motion to approve the language as written, or if you need time for him to kind of tweak it and us to see it next meeting?
I don't think so. I think we're doing it right here in front of us, right, Jeff?
Yeah, just, uh, you can skip over this, um, this other, I was just making some notes here. So, um, the language that, you know, I made a couple very minor tweaks while we were talking and I think Chris, this is where Chris mentioned he had something. So, you know, the language that I think we are relatively comfortable moving to city council would be that um, no plan approval shall be required in those instances where a change in use is proposed and no substantial physical changes or increase in footprint. Um, so this is a little bit of wordsmithing here that's going to happen. So, so it's like no substantial physical changes
Yeah, good.
Other than signs and ADA compliance or increases in footprint, you know, as determined by the building commissioner, will occur to the site or building exterior. And, and so this is, you know, there is a little bit of a catchall here. I will just say this is that, and I don't have any specific examples of this, but in it says, and where no new or additional requirements of the zoning must be met for the proposed use. So, um, you know, that was, this is language that is borrowed from Hammer's. So, you know, there could be other provisions in the zoning that could be tripped by a use that I am just not seeing that, but that is, that is in there currently, so.
Jim?
This is a motion to recommend this change, uh, to the footnote in table five point one to city council, is that correct?
Yes, that's where we're recommending it to the city council.
I don't see any need for change.
I have one change. I think we need to change, I think we need to move the words as determined by the building inspector after the word building exterior, I think. I think that would make, because the building inspector is
Yeah. It's both things, it's not just the
Things, right?
Good catch.
And hey, Jeff, I don't know if this would help for context, but, you know, one of the things that we dealt with years ago, I don't know if anybody remembers this, was, um, rooftop dining at trade-ins.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, and, and I think that that probably, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that's not an alteration of the footprint, however, it probably would trigger one of the other pieces of existing ordinance. But I, I, I don't know, I, I just figured I'd bring it up. I don't, like, let's use, maybe use that as an example.
Yeah. What, what about if like, um, a, a grocery store wanted to go into the old theater that's vacant right now, it's certainly big enough for a grocery store, does that trigger any other? Cause I would think that would be something that we'd want to have a hearing about. Is that substantial? Would that be considered substantial enough? Or are you
We defined it right here, it probably wouldn't be unless they're increasing their footprint.
Right. Wouldn't need to, it's a huge space. I just, I feel like that might be something that could be something that the community would want to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, understanding that, like, a grocery store is plan approval, um, and the section of parking that we have would, would allow that use to occur with no parking on site.
Right. I don't know, I
I, I could, I could, I, I would, I, I want to be sensitive because I, I, you know, something will happen with that theater space. Maybe that, you know, I, I just want us to all be aware that the theater space could change use. This amendment would help e- encourage that to happen with, with, with less permitting.
Yeah.
Um, the, the rooftop on trade-ins though, I think, you know, there's going to be substantial building exterior changes to do that. So whether you're, I, I don't know if the proposal was an interior staircase up to the roof or an ex, like, as soon as you get to an exterior staircase and railings on the roof, you're, you're going to trip, you know, the build, the significant building exterior change. But I do want to just be sensitive to like the theater space. You know, there is a lot of opportunity for that to, to someone to fit something in there without a physical change. I mean, that, that space is ripe for something to happen.
Yeah.
With, and it's set up, you know, that it was, it was a theater, it has the emergency egress and the doors are ADA already. So, you know, if, I think we just want to be careful that we are going to open up a couple of opportunities for spaces to get
Well, it's also the only really big place I can think of where any of these things could go in there. I mean, you could conceivably have a CVS open up inside there or have a small hotel or something. I mean, you could, it's big enough that it could, it could make a big difference in downtown.
Could, yeah.
It's a delicate balance to protect against that, but also open doors for opportunity without being exclusive, you know, and you can't say, accept that property.
Right.
I think we just have to either make the sacrifice or not.
Fair point.
All right, so there was a motion, right? And it, was there a second?
I, I haven't actually made it yet.
About the motion?
Yes. I, I, I motioned to recommend to the city council the proposed modification of the footnote for section five and use regula, regulation table five point one.
I'll second that.
All right, so, uh, voting in favor of recommending this, Jim Zarvis.
Aye.
Harry Schuman.
Aye.
Chris Cockshaw.
Aye.
Brenda Salier. Austin Sanders.
Aye.
And I am an aye. All right. Salem, you guys don't need to vote on this, right? Or do you?
Uh, I mean, generally, yeah, we don't usually do it until we get your recommendation. But, um, I mean, we can, you know, if Tom felt comfortable, we could just give it a positive affirmation to go to city council. And, and, and I'm fine with that too. I, I, I think Owen would probably be fine with that. Um, so, I mean, Tom, if you wanted to recommend that, that we send this to council, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Sure, I'll make a motion to recommend, uh, this language to the full council.
Ben, I'll second that. And how do you vote, Tom?
Aye.
And I vote affirmative as well, passes two zero.
Excellent. Are we done with that one, Jeff? Can we move on to the next?
Yep, and just in terms of, just for clarity and process, you know what, um, this is great. Um, what I, what I hope to do is get a memo to Barbara, the city clerk. Um, she asked for it by Thursday morning, which would be the positive recommendation by the planning board. And I think what we talked about was setting a city council public hearing, um, for August nineteenth for this matter to be taken up. So that's, you know, on, on one level, I know this is a long discussion for people who are listening and trying to get through this. But, you know, it's, it's very responsive. And so, um, the goal, as I see it, is for the council to hold the public hearing on August nineteenth. And if, if it passes full city council, it's effective basically the next day. And so I think it is a, ultimately it's a positive to try to support local businesses and, and make sure that we're trying to do whatever we can to make it, you know, make East Hampton business friendly. So I think it's great.
And just as a side note, we did, uh, get special permission since, uh, the August nineteenth meeting is a, is a, our second August meeting, which we normally don't have. And it was supposed to be a bridge, but we did get permission to, to move this forward.
Excellent. All right, with that, uh, we'll reopen the public hearing, uh, to amend section ten point ten to allow cannabis cultivation, manufacturing, research and development in new buildings in the highway business zoning district. So Jeff, I think everybody should have gotten a copy of Jeff's revision here, as well as his markup of the, um, planned business development. By law. Jeff, do you want to explain a little bit about what, how you ended up here?
Yeah, um, thank you, I will do that. I mean, again, this, this is complicated in that, um, we're looking at section ten point ten of the zoning, which is, you know, where all the cannabis, the adult use cannabis regulations are. And based on the discussions last time, um, there was a, a good idea to see if we could fit cannabis cultivation into some of the existing zoning requirements that we have. I think that was one of the discussion pieces is that, um, we were sensitive to not be overburdening cannabis as an industry, but also realizing that as, as we talk about allowing cultivation, it, it could actually be easier than establishing some other business in, in the highway business. And so that, the thought process was that we found a section of the zoning, uh, it's eight point one, which is a planned business development that actually has, has a lot of the criteria that we, I think we were looking for. Um, and it, it's, it's a way to really treat cannabis very equal to other businesses and developments that would go in highway business. And so there's some detail there, but what I was going to show was that on the surface, the amendment that gets moved, potentially gets moved to city council is actually pretty straightforward. Um, and we are able, um, to potentially just make a, a change to ten point ten. Um, and so as I get here through share screen, what we, um, talked about, the way it comes out in words is, um, that we are talking about the red. So it says, in the highway business, and then it starts, the new text would be any cannabis establishment shall be permitted. Um, there's a typo there, provided that any cannabis establishment other than one that is solely retail shall comply with the, I think it's just comply with the plan, I'm sorry, there's a couple typos here. There's a comply with the planned business development requirements under section eight point one. And the building cap set forth under section eight point one two shall apply to each structure connected to the cannabis establishment. So it is a lot of words, but what we're trying to do is say that So, it is a lot of words, but what we're trying to do is say that, um, if you have a single retail cannabis establishment, then you're just going to go, um, forward as a retail assumption. What this is to capture any other cannabis establishments, as well, we've been talking about cultivation, product manufacturing. And it's, it's designed to capture and allow new buildings to go. So, um, the rest of this document was just to talk through, so to speak, the planned business development criteria. And, um, you know, I highlighted eight point one one. Um, really just says that, um, planned business developments are, are permitted in the highway business, which is our focus here. And, um, only upon an issuance of a special permit under twelve point seven. So, so this is required for cannabis, it's required for all other uses, and it's the same, that's how section ten point ten is set up, is that you look at the criteria of ten point ten, and then you also look at the criteria of a special permit, so it's really no different than what ten point ten does now. Um, I would say that eight point one two is the most nuanced of, of the whole section. And, um, you know, it defines a planned business development shall mean a development constructed on a lot or lots under single or consolidated ownership at the time of application. So for all intensive purposes, that's what we would be expecting of a cannabis establishment to come in for a property or multiple properties, they would be, um, prospective buyers of the lot. Um, to develop and operate and maintain as a single entity containing one or more structures to accommodate retail and service uses, and shall be at least three acres in size, so that, that is noted in the right here is that this, that's the one size requirement of, of a planned business development is three acres. Um, and shall conform to six point one zero, which is the building size cap for retail uses. So, a lot of the things that we discussed early on were about that building cap size and making it a level playing field, and this was really the section that we found that, um, other uses proposing to be a planned business development are also going to be subject to that size limit. Um, and I realize there'll be questions, and, um, so, eight point one four is area height and bulk. So what this does is it simply refers back to our two tables of regulations, so it would be setbacks, building height, and all the same requirements in the highway business would apply to this use, so it's just leveling the playing field. Um, eight point one four B just says that, um, you know, that, it says uses shall be contained in one continuous building, except that groupings of buildings may be allowed by special permit. Um, my note on the right is that it suggests one building but offers flexibility in multiple buildings. And I just wanted to be clear that in my consultation with people, we wouldn't get a special permit for planned business development and then have them apply for a separate special permit, it would just be part of the proposal. So, it's just kind of normal for us to, you know, look at this and combine any permitting together. Um, served by one common area and common exit and entrance areas. There is this section D, which the following uses are restricted to a total of twenty percent of the gross floor area. So convenience market, drive-in, drive-through restaurants, automated, automated teller, bank machines, banks, and drive-through windows, automated service, automotive service station. So, you know, I think that this provision would likely not be applicable to a cannabis establishment. And then what we've seen is that typically the retail component of cannabis would be included in the review of whatever's proposed, so, um, I did make a note that a cultivation facility is not required to have any retail. So I don't think there's any conflict with this section D, um, if you were looking at it for a cannabis establishment. Um, um, D, it goes on to talk about, um, trip generation, and it goes through, uh, there's another section that talks about that, so I'll cover it there. Um, these are, this, the additional requirements. Um, it repeats that it shall be served by one common parking area and common entrance and exit areas. Um, so that's applicable across the board, as is requirement that it's served by public water and sewer. This was something that we talked about last time, that the proposed development must comply with the commercial development and environmental performance standards of ten point five and ten point two. So, in ten point five is where we talk about, there shall be a buffer of vegetation between parking areas and property lines. And it gives some just design criteria, which is what we had talked about. Um, it talks about architectural design, it talks about lighting, landscaping, and then the traffic impact. Um, this next section require, like, allows for a reduction in parking. So this is something that we see in a couple of other sections where an applicant could make the case that less parking is necessary. Generally a good thing to have that flexibility. And then the traffic impacts they've been here, this, this entire section is, um, already enumerated as a requirement in ten point ten, so, um, I could flashback to ten point ten, but we already built that into a cannabis establishment's requirements. So this isn't, this is not adding any, adding anything new for a cannabis establishment to get put into this section. Um, I think, let's see. Um, again, it's the extra building, um, and then I think this is the last one. It says here where the development constitutes subdivision, the development shall be subject to planning board approval under subdivision control. So that's really only if there's a subdivision, we're not expecting that. And then the last one was this bond, so, um, it's only required if there's a subdivision, so that was my quick way to try to explain that by putting cannabis under this section, it's really an equalizer to, to the process.
I thought it was really helpful, Jeff, thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments? Oh, I got a member of the public, any board members have any comments or questions first? All right, well first, uh, yeah, Brenda? Sorry, sir, we'll get to you in one second.
Don't mind letting the public go first, or is this the process, we talk first?
Yeah, I mean, we can talk second too, but, I mean, I just want to make sure we.
Let the public talk, so, Dave, we don't keep them waiting.
All right, sir, you can unmute yourself, if you can just give us your name and address when you start, please. Oh, you're still muted there.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Kaka Saman, um, my address is one seventy Palmeri Meadow Road. So, um, I'm just thinking back, I, I know Jeff has sent me, uh, multiple videos on, um, the, on this agenda, on this topic here about the change in the highway business. And I'm just trying to understand what, why, why is the change now, and why weren't the changes made before? And what, what, I mean, why is this occurring now? Basically, it's, it's almost like, um, trying to understand about, let's say us or another group, another cannabis retailer or cultivator who had to follow the ordinance, ordinance prior to this and find existing buildings to go into. And we're making a change for, I think, maybe a, one specific entity? So I'm just trying to understand how this would all work and how it would impact us, because we also have a two hundred foot buffer between retail to retail, and I'm actually proposing a location at one or two North Hampton Street. So I'm just trying to understand, like, the ordinance and the city council of making these quick changes so fast when, uh, everybody else had to go through a specific process and abide by the ordinance and the zoning bylaws when we hosted our, whether we hosted a community outreach or not. So I'm just trying to understand everything that's going on and wrap my head around how this has come about, I should say.
How we got here?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so, I mean, when we were originally drafting these bylaws, there was a bit of concern about, um, this was even before the state had put out their guidelines, and so there was, there was a bit of concern about these, um, the equivalent of sort of a big box store, right, there was talk about somewhere on the South Shore had bought the old cellphone company, they were going to do a million square foot grow, and I think that sort of prompted everybody involved in the drafting to kind of, well, let's say in highway business that they have to use an existing building. And I think now, even though, I mean, it was sort of prompted by a proposal to change this, but, um, you know, when we draft these or propose these, we, we make a point, I mean, we're not drafting this for a specific project. It, I think we've talked about maybe three or four sites in the highway business that are potential sites for this kind of a thing. So even though there is one proposal that I guess brought this to either city council or Jeff or however it got here, you know, we're not, we're not just looking at this tasty top site for a specific project, I mean, we're, we're trying to figure out if there's a way to allow new buildings for this use, and if so, what kind of limits we want to put on it, what kind of oversight, um, which is sort of how we ended up here, where we're kind of trying to treat it, I think, more or less like any other commercial use that, that would be governed by this for this sort of size. But it is true, right, zoning, zoning, you, you apply based on the zoning that you have, and, you know, you, you've got a project that's already been gone through zoning under a prior zoning bylaw, and it's a different world than what it would be after the change, it's true.
Correct, and I, sorry, should I?
No, please, no, no, yeah, please.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand this again, now, you're going to open up this door, and there's like, three to four lots that you, you, you might possibly allow cannabis cultivation, so the highway business, correct? I don't know what the master plan for the highway business is, but is it going to be a master plan of filled up with cultivations? Or is it going to be a bunch of retails and all this other stuff for the community or stores that are more inviting, or, I, I don't know either, I'm just trying to understand, like, what is the main plan for the highway business, is it going to be manufacturing in the future? Or is it going to be more of a trading route for other communities from other cities to pass through and to stop in, and to, you know, stop into visit a store, a retail, or a restaurant, or anything like that, to help generate the revenues for these smaller businesses?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the question, right, I mean, that's definitely the stuff we've been dealing with, I, I'm, I'm impressed you've watched our prior hearings. Um, because they're hard to sit through, let alone watch other people do it, but, um, that, I mean, that is, that's the question, right, is like, how much, uh, how much do you open, want to open the door, and what do you, I mean, the manufacturing, other than what we're proposing here, manufacturing is generally not allowed in the highway business. Um, so that's not really an avenue, as the zoning is currently written, but, I mean, zoning can always be amended. That, that's the million dollar question, I mean, it, I, I don't think anybody knows how that'll plan, plan out.
I just want to add something to, in terms of context and going back, so I did send, um, uh, Mr. Kasim some of the videos from the June, it was the June and July, right, so.
Yes.
Um, and I didn't, you know, in, in hearing, in hearing your question about how this came about, it really made me realize that there was a conversation that, um, happened in two thousand eighteen, and I think that's what Jesse was referring to. So that, I, I would like to send that to you as well, I, I just, you had asked for the recent kind of discussion of the amendment, so I focused on the June and July. But in two thousand eighteen, when the planning board was looking at creating all the zoning for cannabis, there was, I would say, a fairly extensive discussion about whether or not to allow cultivation in, in, in new buildings. And so, there was a two, two-year lead time on the potential for this to come forward, and then it was a request for the, for the city to consider it now. So, there is one step in the, you know, it's, it was two years ago, so that might be something that would be important to see and hear, which is that those discussions did happen two years ago. And ultimately, because of the time sensitivity of that amendment at that time, to create the cannabis zoning before the regulations that the state came out, the discussion was, we'll, we'll put in a safeguard for now, and we may revisit this later, and then that's when it actually came to fruition. You know, many months ago, it was brought forward as something, as a request to, to look at the amendment. So there's just, there is one, you know, that's important, I think, for, for Kott to know that this didn't just start in June, it actually started two years ago when the discussions first, first happened, and then it was kind of like punted, so I think, um, the punt happened, and then it was picked up again in the past couple of months.
I.
Yeah, sir.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Getting back to what Jeff was saying there, um, so the, the, the other thing, the other thought is, is the way I, we, I guess, I'm looking at this is, um, we have multiple retails already, well, or, or ACAs are already out there, correct, and we, this, this ordinance was, uh, I mean, approved in March of twenty eighteen. So, have we even took in the steps to even see how this would work with the retails that are existing now? Or the microgrows or the possible cultivations going in this area already into existing buildings? Before we even jump these other steps and slip this in, when most of the businesses, some of them are operational and some of them are starting to get up or starting to work their way to become operational? I mean, should we even really bypass all this and just slip this in and just allow everything across the board? I don't know either, I mean, I'm just trying to understand it all.
Yeah, I think those are fair questions. Jim?
Uh, they are fair questions, and they're good things that we should be discussing, and so I'll put my thoughts out there right now. We, we have, uh, six, um, permits, I think, that we can have. Um, I think we've got, what, two or three right now? One of which went to you, sir, we're looking forward to that. Uh, the issue here is about whether or not the planning board should involve itself in fair competition, and really, it shouldn't. Competition between businesses is just, that's capitalism, and that's not something we deal with. We've got six licenses, and the question is, can a type of business be part of that competition? And I, I don't really think in any way we're, we're touching on that in this discussion, I don't think anything's getting slipped in. I, I think it's just adding, uh, a group to that use. Um, now I know that retail is the six licenses, Jeff, right, they're specific to retail. And we're talking about manufacturing in this case, and so it's really kind of, in, in that case, it is a separate thing, is that correct, Jeff, can you confirm that?
That the cap of six applies to retail?
Hmm.
Yes, the cap of six only applies to retail establishments.
But, in this, when we're only talking about new construction, right? Um, it could, in addition to having research or manufacturing a grow, it could have retail as a component, requiring one of those six licenses. I still don't really think that it's in any way slipping anything in, I, I think that it's, it's adding, uh, a separate use into an area that might be able to support it, that's my feeling.
Brenda, I think you had your hand up.
So, I, over the past couple of weeks, I read the Highway Business District report. I looked at the videos from twenty eighteen, I read all the materials that Jeff provided, and I just am really having trouble with this proposal for a few reasons. I don't think cultivation and manufacturing meet the standards of a definition for what the Highway Business District is about. Um, high traffic, volume of vehicles, pedestrians, bikes, PBT access. Um, I mean, you're talking about a really large building where very few people are going to be going there. Um, you know, in twenty eighteen, there was a lot of concern about blight associated with large new buildings. I think that's still something we need to consider. Um, since manufacturing is prohibited, I really listened to you guys, and you made a great case to not treat this industry differently. So why are we treating it differently and giving it a pass on manufacturing? Let's say somebody wants to build a fifty thousand square foot manufacturing building, if we pass this, I think that would be allowed. What if they fail, go bankrupt? How are we going to repurpose that building when manufacturing isn't allowed in this district? Um, so, I just, I don't like it, I don't like it, it's just not working for me at all, I'm just really struggling with it. I think it's not what the Highway Business District was designed for. Um, retail, I think, is great, but manufacturing in particular, it's like it's prohibited, why are we going to give this industry a pass? When we shouldn't be treating it any differently? I understand there's a huge economic opportunity here, I'm not blind to that. But what if all these three, there's pretty much three big parcels, the, the ice cream golf course and the two before River Valley? Um, what if all three of them, you know, in, in this time, there's a lot of private equity, venture capital money? And what if they all become manufacturers and cultivators? If we pass this, I don't think. If we pass this, I don't think it would be prohibited. You know, there's going to be a consolidation. It always happens in new industries. You know, money sort of floods in and there's a lot of new players. And then the big players gobble them up. I think NETA already sold to a, a national company. And they'll be like, oh, we're overextended in this one area, so let's close two of the four that we own. I just, and I really worry about driving up into East Hampton from North Hampton. I, I really think it would be a shame if there's three 50,000 square foot buildings, you know, that are there. So of this type where they're just the metal, you know, they're not nicely designed, they're not welcoming and nobody's going there. It'd be like dead zones. So those are my thoughts. Thanks for listening. Okay.
And I, I think that was helpful, Brenda. I mean, I, I do think that it's, so what I heard is you're making the connection to new buildings. I do just want to be really clear that um, first, you know, you could do it in an existing building. So cultivation is, it's already been allowed to some extent. And I'm just for clarity, so I, I think it's important at this point so that Mr. Cosm, you know, is proposing a cultivation facility across the street from the site that we have at least mentioned once or twice, the Tasty Top facility. So um, we are getting close to being intertwined with what, you know, is going to be seeing. I think what, what, what caught mentioned was how does this play out? You know, our previous decisions, how do they play out? I think we are going to be, I think the planning board is going to be seeing them play out and has been for some time. So I, I do, just in terms of clarity that um,
Shown to that though, I don't, I think they are totally separate issues. We need to repurpose current buildings. And it's awesome that this gentleman wants to invest in that. And because it isn't cheap to rent out a, a current building. So I think that is aimed at really trying to solve a whole other problem. That almost doesn't have anything to do with this particular industry. It's, we need to repurpose these buildings or there is going to be blight on, I mean, the main thoroughfare coming into our town. So I just don't think there's any inconsistency. I think that was a really smart decision you guys made. It does provide opportunity for these new businesses, for them, for the town and to repurpose, you know, these sites. What else are you going to do with the car dealership these days? We really were fortunate with, with River Valley. So I, I just don't think they're the same issue at all. I, I, I don't.
Thanks, Brenda. Um, other thoughts, comments, questions? Uh, yeah, sure.
So I'm going to get back to, I, I just want to bring us back in time a little bit to about community outreaches. Now, everybody who has held a community outreach was in compliant with zoning and the ordinance. We all knew and had to select sites that was part of East Hampton zoning. Now, I'm just trying to think like, I mean, how could a company hold a community outreach and say that they're in compliant? Meaning they would have to be in compliant with the CCC as well. Because we, our compliance is based below the CCC or we submit our compliance to the CCR ordinance. And how could that approval even get by? I don't understand like, and then now we're backtracking and making, pushing a change. Because a company held a community outreach stating that they were in, I, I'm assuming in compliant with the city's zoning and ordinance. I mean, I, I'm having trouble wrapping myself around all that.
Yeah. So I mean, that's not, well, I mean, I have no idea what that is or, or how people have done with their community outreach meetings. I mean, all we're looking at here is a draft zoning by law. So whether a potential applicant has run afoul of the CCC or, you know, did or didn't do what they were supposed to do, I have no idea about that. And I mean, really, it doesn't have any bearing. I mean, we're really focused on trying to think more theoretically about a hypothetical plan in that highway business zone than a specific project. We have to really avoid that.
Okay.
Salem, did you have your hand?
Yeah, I just want to um, go back to the manufacturing piece. Cause I know that Brenda was talking about manufacturing. I, I guess I'm, I'm not really understanding. I, I thought we were talking about cultivation. I mean, if we're talking about cultivation, why are we talking about manufacturing? And is it just because when you're done cultivating, you cut it down and dry it? Is that considered manufacturing? Cause if that's the case, then Burger King manufactures sandwiches and McDonald's manufactures sandwiches. And you know, I mean, it's like, uh, if we're talking about high level, you know, chemical interactions that was manufacturing, that would be more suited for the industrial zone, I get that. I just, I guess I'm just, I'm, I'm a little, um, I, I, I don't understand the, the hang up on manufacturing. If we're just talking about drying something and then preparing it for sales, that, I, I, I don't know.
I don't think the bylaw defines that as manufacturing. I think it's when it gets put into a different product. So I think it would be making edibles or something like that. I think that's, I mean, I think I said this last time, the irony is right that like, if you make a granola bar, you can't put your factory there. But if you put cannabis in it, you can. So I think there's like some, that part is a little different than just the plain cultivation, I think. Tom?
At the risk of falling down a rabbit hole here, um, two things. The one is, I think when we, we talk about the stuff as manufacturing and it is manufacturing, but we're not, you know, I, I, my first job was at Berry Plastic. Uh, you know, uh, tubed products, doing like that sort of stuff. And we're talking billions of dollars of heavy machinery turning plastic into bottles. I, I've toured Insa's facility and I've seen where they manufacture things. It's a kitchen, right? Uh, it's, it's a kitchen with a little room for the, um, I'm blanking on the name. When you do the distillate stuff where you have to like, uh, ground yourself because a spark in that room could be a little bit of a problem. But it, you know, when we're talking about repurposing these spaces, we're not talking about auto assembly lines. It's, it's a, it's a space that you could rip the equipment out and, and yes, it's a big space. I, I abs, I actually do really get that just getting a lot of square footage for one use is perilous for repurposing. But I think that this whole manufacturing versus retail, we should just be thinking about square footage. Um, and in terms of these places, you know, I, I, and by the way, Brenda, I really appreciate you like sort of doing the dill, like the due diligence and pushing back on the stuff. Because that's what I end up doing on the council a lot of the time. And it's, it's a, it's a good thing. Some people need to do it. But I just want to, again, from, from my tours of these places, I think I, I would need to just object a little bit to the, the notion that they're dead zones. You know, it's not like there's a robot trimming these things. These are, you know, there's, there's people, many of them East Hampton residents who are employed, going around and, and, and doing all this stuff. Now, whether you could say that there's maybe better uses, I mean, I don't, auto oriented development is not my thing to begin with. So I, I don't exactly know, but like, I, I don't think, like, it's, they're not dead zones for the people who work there. I get, that's all that I, I mean, but I don't, I, I think that there's a bigger issue. And the other thing is, I just want to say to, you know, uh, to cotton and, um, you know, his, his organization. Like I, I do, I, I think that like, you know, it is, it is worth saying that like, you know, th- this is the peril of, of setting a certain set of rules and then saying, well, you know, maybe we'll change them later is that, well, certain people are going to move ahead under the existing rules. And maybe they'd be making different decisions if the rules had been different. So, you know, I, I don't have a clear amp, like, I don't have a clear idea of what to do about it. But like, yeah, I, I'm sympathetic to, to what that's, what that, what's going on there.
So I, I just have a question for Jeff. Because if we, um, correct me if I'm wrong. If we applied the planned business development criteria to this, it would have to be a three acre site. Is that correct? So how many three acre sites do we have in highway business?
Jeff, I don't think that's necessarily true. I thought, I mean, I think that planned business development to qualify for those requirements, it would have to be three acres. But we're qualifying it for requirement regardless of size, aren't we? I mean, we're just saying any of these uses are governed by the planned business development.
Um, it's worth, sorry, I'm lost in my screens here. Um, it's worth talking about this for a second because my, and I, we, we may need to. My understanding of kind of putting cannabis establishments under the provisions of eight point one is that it would need to hit the three acre size requirement on the parcel. That would be the way that I would initially read it. Because we're trying to um, fit it into that existing zoning without changing eight point one. And so the way I, the way I would read eight point one is that in order to be a planned business development, you'd have to be at three acres.
I, I would just, I mean, if that's the way we're reading it, then I think we're doing it wrong with the retail cap size. Cause I think what we're doing is adopting these standards and applying them to these uses. So it would be no different than the fact that we're adopting the retail cap and applying it to cultivation or manufacturing cannabis. Right? Cause that, the retail cap size wouldn't apply to those, but we're sort of shoehorning this use in. I think it'd be the same with eight point one. Like eight point one defines what falls under it, but we're saying, but also if it's one of these uses, it falls under it.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if, if that's a deal breaker and kind of moving it forward or, or if there's an analysis that should be done. There are multiple three acre sites, so it's not as if this is only one site. I think the three that Brenda mentioned, um, the, there's another one adjacent to 102 North Hampton Street. That's currently listed by Cannon. You know, that's not, that's, that's, um, well, actually I shouldn't, I, I, I should double check that, that acreage. I thought it was at least three acres. Jesse, I don't know. I, I, how would you determine, you know, the other sections of eight point one? You know, we, we wanted to try to fit cannabis under the entire section so that it hit, so that it was subject to all the requirements of eight point one. That was my initial understanding of how we were calling, you know, a cannabis cultivator. We were calling it um, planned business, the cat, planned business development, so they would fall under all those provisions.
I mean, I, I probably need to look over this again a little more carefully, but I thought eight point one two was like the definition of a planned business development. So if it's not three acres, it doesn't qualify for this. Like if you were opening an office park that was two and a half acres, you wouldn't trip this requirement.
Okay.
And so I don't see it as a requirement for satisfying the standards of a planned business development. I see it as like a qualifier to even have it apply. But now that you're saying that, I mean, it, we might need to take a closer look at that before I sign my opinion in blood.
Well, before, yeah, and you know, it may be, this is a little bit semantics, but this is the time to do it. There may be part of what you said earlier was that under 10.10, then instead of refer, so I had automatically seen that under planned business development, they're subject to the retail size cap. Um, one way to do this would be to reference section six instead of section eight point one two, which is what I referenced in that. Let me show the screen here for a second. Sorry, many screens going on here. So here, um, it would be, this provision would be.
Oh, I see what you did there. Yeah.
Yeah. But so by changing that, you know, then, let me step, take one step back. Eight point one two was the section of the planned business development that referred to the size cap. So I was kind of envisioning that you would want that there to make that one of the provisions. But you can do that uh, by referring to six point one here. So then all the other provisions of eight point one would be applicable, right? Except eight, except for the definition. I apologize if that's not making much sense at the moment. I'm going to go back and look at this section. I don't know if there's other questions that we can go to a minute.
Yeah, Chris.
Doesn't the state, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we discussed at the last meeting that the state defines cannabis as manufacturing and not as um, and not uh, anything else manufacturing.
It's not agriculture. It's, it's carved out of the statute.
Okay. So it's not, uh, thank you for that word. I lost it. So not agriculture, it's manufacturing. So why are we having the debate whether it's cultivation or manufacturing at this point? Is there, is there something in our bylaws that makes us define that?
Well, I, I think what Salem said the last time was common sense is the part that pushes back against that. But I think there's, it's sort of agriculture with a big A or agriculture with a little a. Cause the agriculture with a big A is the state statute that defines it. Agriculture with a little a, I think it would be a dictionary definition, which would include that, but uh,
So if we, if there was someone coming in and saying they had, you know, I don't know, 500 beehives and they were going to make bee whack, uh, beeswax candles and they were going to, they were going to, you know, make these candles in a factory and enclose building. And they were going to package them and distribute them, would that be considered agriculture?
I think that's, that's a approved agricultural, like by right. You can't deny that because it's considered agriculture.
Yeah, I'm not sure when that become, like, there, there's some fine points on when the agriculture becomes manufacturing. When you're putting together candles, I don't, I, you'd have to get into the nuance of that.
Yeah, yeah. I, I want to make sure we're making decisions that aren't specifically about, well, I guess we are if we're talking about cannabis specifically. But um, I, I really tend to agree with Brenda. I don't really, I don't see the, I, I, I also have issues with this, um, doing this in highway business. And I'm not convinced that it is agriculture or that it's cultivation. I think it is manufacturing if, and, and if, if we're going to do it for cannabis, we need to do it for everything. I mean, that would allow manufacturing in the highway business. And that's a, I guess, a different discussion, maybe. I don't know, but that's all I had to say.
Thanks, Chris. Jim?
Well, I strongly disagree with the notion that it's anything but agriculture. And I love your example because I think, uh, Chris, because I think it paints a good picture. And another one would be the dairy industry, which has all kinds of heavy machinery. And really what you think of when you think of factory, you know, after processing and cheesemaking and packaging. And you know, that's what agriculture is. And that's why I think this is an agricultural use. And I strongly disagree with the state. It is already allowed that you'll be able to do this in existing buildings. We're only talking about new buildings. But the thing I'm getting to at this point is that it seems to me we're spinning our wheels a little bit. We've already made these arguments each meeting we've been here and we're not changing any minds. And I, and I think that it may be time for us to, either there's some piece of additional information we need or it might be time to call for a vote and just see where we stand. And that's all I want to say on that.
Any other comments, questions? I do have one other person from the public out there. I don't know if it's someone that wants to ask a question or make a comment. But if you do, if you either want to turn on your camera or raise your virtual hand or hit star nine if you're on a phone. All right. Certainly not required. Jeff, what do you think about this definition issue with this section eight?
Um, my initial reaction is that um, it, it would be more effective if that eight point one two did, did count, did um, fact, I'm sorry, did, I'm, I'm losing the word I want to say here. We do want a cannabis cultivation facility to qualify as a three acre and it fits in that size criteria. I mean, that was the way that I had envisioned kind of running through that. It, it levels the playing field. So again, if you want to be a planned business development, you have to have three acres. And you would comply with the um, building cap size. And I think that that was the, that was the equalizer to, to bringing cannabis into that provision. I just wonder what happens if, if you look at the rest of the sections, whether, how, how do we determine what other sections are applicable if that first one isn't? I think that there's no issue. I mean, I think that there are multiple three acre parcels, so it's not, um, I don't know if that is a, of concern. I don't think that's an issue. We could crunch some numbers, I believe, and, and have um, some data behind that.
So Jeff, what happens if somebody wants to do like a, a planned business development, all lowercase letters on a two acre lot? Right now, like non-cannabis. They have to.
You said on all lowercase letters?
Yeah. I mean, it's not meeting this definition, but it's still a planned business development, right? So like, are, are they just not allowed to do like a multistructure, multi-use complex on less than three or is that?
That's the way that I would interpret that. Yeah.
So this is like an exception for sort of a subdivision, right? It's almost like a subdivision exception that allows you, if you're at least three acres to do a mixed use. Multi-structure business park.
Yeah. It's like, um, if, if you look at the multifamily provision, so the planning board just dealt with one on Loudville Road. And instead of doing a subdivision, which would be complicated and it would have a road and each would lot would be its own saleable thing that if you qualify, so the multifamily dwelling has a, has a acre, acre threshold. That if you can achieve that, then you could do multiple buildings on one and call it one lot, basically. Yeah, that, that's the way that I interpreted it. It was that it was just going to make a cannabis cultivation facility sort of on the equal with a planned business development in the criteria.
So then doesn't that mean that regardless of if you have more than one use, or if you're only doing one cannabis use, that you would still need a three acre lot to build a new building anywhere in highway business? Is that how you mean this to read?
Yeah.
So even if I was just going to do one retail structure under this draft language, I would need to do it. If I was going to build a new one, I would have to have a three acre lot and comply with all of 8, 8.0.
I guess, I, I guess if you're just a retail establishment, I thought that that's the language in 10.10 that we, we wanted to acknowledge that you could do just retail and not be a planned business development.
Oh yeah. Okay. You're right. So we carved out only retail. But if you were just going to do cultivation, you would need to have a three acre lot and comply with all these standards.
Yeah. Yep. And whether that's, I guess that's the question is whether that's what everyone was, if that's what we're doing. That's the way it would be read, I believe.
Okay.
So it would set up a size requirement for, yeah, it would set up, if you were going to propose a new cultivation facility in the new building, you would have a size threshold of three acres.
And I, I mean, it seems to me like that could work as a little bit of an equalizer to the, you know, the, the businesses that have already been established. Because if you're going to get three acres in highway business, that's, that's a pretty penny. And you're not just going to like willy nilly put in a cultivation spot without putting a lot of thought into that. I mean, because I think the place next to the post office probably does not, that site does not have three acres, correct?
Correct. I don't, yeah, the cook building supply, I don't think is three acres.
No. Yeah. You know, so I mean, it, what it does is it kind of, if you go into an, it encourages going into an existing building because that would, you know, which I think to Brenda's point is good. Like we want existing buildings to be reused. And then, but if you are going to commit to doing this, then you're going to be committing a lot of resources. Um, and you're going to want to do it right. If you're going to have to have three acres, I think. I mean, that's just the way I look at it.
I think it would reduce the number of sites that might be subject to, you know, larger cultivation operations, just by the nature of creating that threshold. And the important part for me and just, and just trying to rationalize this is that it's the same threshold for a planned business development. So you know, the, we have to try to make sure that we're trying to imagine not just cultivation, but this is what another, you know, multiple building development would, would be subject to as well. So I think that that's, you know, that's the interesting part is that I suppose you could have one building. You know, you could have a site with one building that would be cultivation, but that doesn't seem like necessarily the, well, certainly not what we, what we expect for, for the one project that we know about. I guess that's the one thing to think about is if you had a single cultivation building and no other buildings on the site, then you, then you would be subject to this three acre size.
Okay. That's a little different than I had imagined it, but I guess that makes sense. Um, any other comments or questions? Harry, you got anything?
I don't know what I'm going to say. If you're concerned about the size of these buildings, I'm going to just put a, a distance factor into. But it could be so far apart. Wouldn't that eliminate that problem?
What do you mean?
Well, first of all, how many sites on North Hampton Street are there for, for something like this to begin with?
I think we're looking at about three. Maybe a fourth, but I think.
How tall are they together?
Oh, you mean make it so that i- increase the buffer between multiple sites?
Yeah.
Well, that, that, that's where we get into sort of the scope of our notice here. We can't really do all that in this context. So it's a question of what do we do now with what we have before us?
Well, you can.
Anyone else?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Yes. Can you give me an address?
Uh, actually there's three of us. It's Jennifer Cernak, Ken Cernak and Jeff Cernak. Uh, we're representing 102 North Hampton Street.
Excellent.
We apologize. We've been having computer difficulties with the video.
No problem.
So I, I'd kind of like to go back a little, little bit. Jeff, do you recall a meeting that you and I had some months ago?
You're referring to me? Zoe?
Yes.
Is this Ken? I don't, I don't know who's speaking. I can't see anyone on camera.
It's Jeff who's speaking.
Yeah, I have a vague recollection of you coming in to talk to me at town hall. Yeah.
Yeah. I, at, at, so Ken and Jennifer went to the, uh, the meeting for uh, what's.
The advanced, what, research?
Yeah, advanced research.
For cannabis or whatever.
And after that, I had read the, uh, read the bylaws. And I'm the one who actually flagged this issue, I believe, Jeff, when I went and talked to you and asked you the question about it. Could a, uh, new built, or a new building be built for cultivation? And at that point, I believe you, you told me in a, as we both read through it in a surprise fashion, that gee, no, the current bylaws wouldn't allow that. And I said, okay. And I said, can that be changed? And you said, I don't know. I'll have to get back to you. I was very surprised to learn from Kot, who is, uh, working with us that, um, that there were two meetings about this that I was unaware of. We just found out the last few days.
I mean, I think that is accurate. And I think, um, you know, what happened was upon learning of that, you know, it was referred to the other entity and the zoning change was initiated to correct that. I think that that was, you know, not clear to all parties when the other discussions started. I think as a matter of course, usually when there's a problem in zoning, there's, there's a way to initiate a change. And so I think that's really what happened is I think whether or not you flagged it and you might have, and I think upon bringing that forward, I think it, it created the need to look at that section. So, um, I think that that did happen in that way. But I think that's the nature of zoning is that we, the city, whoever learns of the problem, you know, there's always an attempt, or not always, there is sometimes an attempt to fix it or adjust it. So I think that that, that is part of what initiated the change.
Right. And the, the other, uh, thing that we talked about at that time was the, the 200 foot, which I believe setback between cannabis facilities, correct?
I don't really recall that necessarily.
Mr. Cernak, are you talking about the buffer between cannabis establishments?
Yes. My understanding is property line to property line. Is that correct?
Uh, I believe so. Yes.
Right. So if, if one were to go in on one side of the street, the, and that something else was directly across the street from it, that that could not go in under the current bylaws or zoning ordinance.
Yeah. Roughly speaking, I think that's a fair application.
Okay. So it, it surely would have been nice to be notified, uh, before the initial meeting that you had on the 23rd, that this was going to be discussed because we would have joined on that meeting and on the 14th, for that matter, had we known about it prior to that as well.
Yeah. Zone, zoning proposals like this are tricky, especially when they come up and, and everyone's sort of focused on one project, but it's really not an application for that site. So there's general notice to the city as a whole in the form of posting agendas, but you don't get the abutters notification because really it's a bylaw that applies to the entire city. So it can, it can make for some unfortunate sort of situations where people who feel most directly impacted didn't realize that it was happening. That's unfortunate. I'm sorry that happened.
Yeah. Have, have you all, just another question. Have you all discussed this with other cannabis owners slash retailers, cultivators on this street? I would think that they might be interested, you might be interested in getting their opinion on it before going forward. Uh, I believe you've got, uh, two of them down the street. From this, from where we are, uh, from where we are essentially.
Yeah. I mean, we, we rarely are, um, I mean, we're always soliciting input from anyone in the public who wants to come and talk to us, but we're rarely chasing people down. And so, I mean, I'm glad to see that we have some participants here today, which is nice. But I, I mean, I haven't, we haven't talked, heard from any of them at the public hearings, whether or not ordinance has or not, I don't know, but the planning board hasn't. Mr. Zarvis, you got a comment or a question to add?
I'm hoping Mr. Cernak has more and I apologize, but I just want to toss this in just to let you know. This part of the process, and you may know that already, will either end in a recommendation to do something or not to the city council and it won't end there. This is just the very beginning discussions on this, and then it goes to city council if, if that's where we send it. Where then they have more discussions and et cetera. So I just want you to know, this isn't like you had to show up here tonight to, you know, because this is your opportunity to pitch in. There will be more opportunities to pitch.
Good point, Jim.
Forward.
Mr. Cernak, do you have anything else you guys want to add?
At this point, probably not.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Board members or public or Jeff? Yeah. Kot, one more time?
Sorry, I had to unmute that just now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Uh, Jeff, Jeff, thanks for pointing that out. Um, now it just puts me in question of trying to think like, um, I guess if Jeff never asked a question or never pointed it out, would this have just gone through and a new construction would have been built and nobody would have realized it and a mistake would have happened? I don't know either, but I mean, shouldn't we be catching these things ahead of time before we even allowed to get this far? I don't understand.
Jim?
Uh, I just want to clarify, what mistake?
Well, I mean, the mistake that I'm talking about is that if Jeff did not point out that this cannabis cultivator could not go into, that has to go into an existing building and it wasn't a new construction, would something have been submitted for an application for a special permit and then been approved and, you know, a bill that would have occurred and then it was just over with, right? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, that's a lot of holes to fall through. I mean, I think, I, I think it's completely reasonable that if someone approaches Jeff Bag, our city planner, and asks about a specific nuanced provision for a relatively new and never used before bylaw, that he wouldn't know it off the top of his head. I do think that it would have come up either once it came to the planning board, or if it went to the building inspector for a building permit or something like that. Or if there was actually a substantial meeting, I think between the applicant for this site and Mr. Bag, that might've come up, but um, I mean, frankly, as far as the discussion of this bylaw, it's kind of irrelevant. I mean, it, we're not talking about a specific project or applicant. We're just talking about a change to the whole zones, zoning bylaw. And so, I mean, I don't know that that has much bearing on sort of the merits of the actual proposal.
But within, isn't this the reason why it's triggered the proposed changes in the zoning?
It's triggered in this case because I believe the city council made a proposal that comes to the planning board and we evaluate a zoning bylaw.
Correct. But I mean, it, it was, I mean, there had to be a reason for it, for a change, right? Now for a submission change or, or ask.
Yeah. Somebody, somebody, somebody wanted a change to the bylaw. Right.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. This, it was, this is what triggered the change is that it was, you know, a group that wants to come in. Which if it was already written that way, it would have been fine. But I mean, we, we, we don't know how everything is working. I mean, it's, I, I, I don't know how to put it, but I mean, I don't know how other cannabis retailers or cultivators or anybody else would feel about having to, we all abide by the ordinance. And, you know, because this felt was missed by the individuals who held a community outreach. Cause if they did their, their homework, I should say, right? Cause I think they're, they're pretty professionals. I've seen their, um, portfolio. They're really good. I mean, they should have caught this. I mean, maybe, you know, propose this prior, not a lot. I mean, this could have been proposed before or something before we get into this situation where now the city council is being pushed on, I kind of feel. Because if there's an urgency that, uh, they need to know that whether they can be there or not, because I don't think it's city council's fault. I think it's, they missed it. They, they didn't, they didn't read the ordinance correctly to know that they could not go into without building, I mean, without going into an existing building, I should say, in the highway business. So now this urgency is, 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 there's a lot of pressure on city council, I think. And, you know, the ordinance committee, planning department to make these fast changes for an entity that is applying pressure. From what I've noticed from the last meeting, like they need to know.
But you've watched our meetings. We're not moving that quickly.
Yes, I did.
I mean,
Yeah, I know, but.
I, I, I'm reading between the lines. You know a lot more about what's going on behind the scenes with this than I do. I mean, when this comes in, I know that there's talk about a project about Tasty Top site. I know that we're looking at a bylaw that applies to the whole highway business zone. But I don't think anybody, I don't know about other members, but I don't think that we're feeling a whole lot of pressure based on a potential applicant under a potential change to a bylaw that's just being discussed now. I mean, frankly, I, I think if, if they get in under, if they get in in time, great. If they don't, great. That's, that's not my concern here. I'm looking long-term highway business. What are we doing?
I completely understand. It was just, you know, I did watch the videos from the last two meetings and there was, you know, uh, a point made that, you know, a vote should be made, whether it's going to be allowed or not. And then there was a few that, you know, wanted to extend it to the next meeting. But I mean, you know, that, that, that question was there, whether a vote should have been made the last meeting. And now it got pushed to this meeting and this meeting was supposed to be another vote. So I mean, there is an urgency there from what I understand.
It's also just part of the process. I mean, I think we're always trying to make sure that we're advancing whatever discussion's happening. I mean, I think it's a nuanced thing about zoning is there seems to be a little bit of a question about how and when this got initiated, which is fine, but I think the, the, the nature of zoning is that there's always an opportunity to change it. And I think that's what we're doing. And I think we've, we've followed the process to do all the notifications and initiate the, this discussion. And so I think that's where we're at. In terms of we're in the, we're in the process to look at it now. So.
Brenda?
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, I think there, what's coming up is an issue of fairness, that, that there's a group of people who follow the rules, who are working to rehab these, these buildings, which benefits the community, benefits them, benefits their customers, benefits the, the landholders. And I, I just think it's, it's worth considering that, that it is an issue of fairness. They've been playing by the rules. Maybe, I think from what Jeff said in a meeting, it costs more to rehab an old building than to build from scratch. So, you know, they're willing to incur all those costs and I just don't think we should not recognize that. And also there will always be old buildings that other people can use on route 10. I mean, you know, the hardware store may go, the one furthest out. That has a big area behind it. That may go out of business. I mean, there's always some churn in the real estate on route 10 that could be made available for people who want to, want to go in this business. And if we take that away and open up all this prime real estate, what's the incentive to repurpose all those old buildings? I mean, we're, we're kind of taking it away. So that's, that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thanks, Brenda. Tom?
So I actually think. I needed to think for a second. I think after I raised my hand, Brenda made a point about does the. Does the requirement to be in old buildings make there be an incentive to rehab buildings that otherwise might stay vacant? I think that's a super interesting point that I've never thought of before, and that wasn't even what I was going to say, but I just want to acknowledge that, like, hadn't really thought of that. Very interesting. In terms of the way this conversation has gone over the last half hour or so, I just want to say. Whatever decisions the city and the planning board and whatever makes in terms of who gets licenses, particularly if there's multiple people applying for licenses that are within. Um. Uh, within the, so they're close enough to one another that it might be a mutually exclusive matter. Is from the point of view of the council, not our, like, that that is not our purview. What we need to think about is should. New buildings be allowed to be constructed in the highway business district? For the purpose of cannabis retail and potentially cannabis cultivation manufacturing. That is. What decisions the city makes, like, the the whole idea of how how the city council works with this stuff with zoning is we set the ground rules for how people operate. And then the decisions about who gets licenses and all that, that is, that's other people's problems. It that's other people's jobs. And that's not what the city council is here to do is we don't pick winners and losers. I just. The the reason why this comes up is I'm really sympathetic to what Cot is saying and like how difficult that situation might be. But whatever that is, that's something that has to be handled between. The planning agency and the mayor's office and maybe the planning board, but not the city council. That's not. What we do and when we write our zoning, it would be, in my opinion. Inappropriate for the council to write zoning. In such a way with the idea of benefiting a particular private interest or not benefiting a particular private interest in mind. That's. I could be talked out of that position, but that's kind of where I am right now. And if we're going to be having this whole conversation, like. I just want people to know that that's sort of the scope in which I'm considering this right now in terms of like, should there be a business at Tasty Top? Is that fair to the folks who are trying to get something done? Cernak, that is. That is, that's the, that's the executive branch's um, problem.
Uh, Jim?
I just want to corroborate that traditionally, we do not get involved in decisions about competition that, you know, we we just set overall guidelines for everyone to follow. The effects on competition have no bearing.
Cot, did you have one more thing to add?
Yes, yes, yes. I was just getting back to, um, uh. Counselor, um, Tom there, um. I wasn't mentioning anything about fairness to licensing or anything like that. I was mentioned, I was more concerned about. The guidance within zoning and ordinance and compliance that has been set forth by city council. And steps that need to be taken in order to. Achieve the steps to getting licensed or being in compliant as an operator who wants to invest into. East Hampton and to be a part of the community. Um, that 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 was my main concern is. How are we going about all this? Now, what if there's another entity that wants to go into the downtown business district and found a lot that they could demolish? And they want to put up a cultivation. Are you going to make those significant changes for them in the downtown business district? Is my question. I mean, or is it going to work for everybody? Or is it going to just work? I mean, it's not about fairness, it's about how you're going to change this ordinance. Per usage for a specific type of. Of company, I should say, or whether it's manufacturing, retail, or cultivating or product manufacturing or anything like that. It's it's just. I mean, it's just something to really think about how it could possibly affect. Everybody else investing into the community, whether it's a retail store, retail shop, uh, manufacturing, they will manufacture clothing. Or any type of business that are going into specific zones. Are you going to constantly make these type of changes based on? Specific usage, nuisances, usage, sorry.
Salem?
I mean, this is, this is a tough piece, and I and I do agree with with Tom and Jim that, you know, we don't get into the the. Competition piece or or try to give an advantage or a disadvantage to any entity. You know, I I think that. Um. You know, one of the things that we considered when we first looked at this as we were writing the zoning was. Around the state, we were kind of, there was like this concern that there was going to be. Like hyperdevelopment of cheap, just quick metal buildings that were sprawling across the landscape. I mean, and, you know, we we were scared for a good reason. They did that with solar in the hill towns, you know, I mean. They gave these huge incentives to put these solar fields, cut down all these trees. And so, you know, we were being cautious. Um, and we allowed cultivation highway business with kind of this caveat. And then as it plays out, we don't see this hyperdevelopment of cultivation. Um, you know, and so it it makes sense to reevaluate this. And, you know, and I think that. Um, Cot, you could potentially see this as as a um, as a hazard to your to your business, your your new, you know, kind of burgeoning business. But it also, like, if you want to expand at some point when you're doing so well in the future, this, if this ordinance was in place. That would allow you to expand your operation. Uh, it would allow you to build a new building for cultivation. Um, and and so I think what we have to do is look at all of these different pieces because I the last thing in the world I would want to do is to hurt. Someone who wants to do business in East Hampton, you know, but I I think that it could potentially. You know, whether they go in or not, I mean, it sounds like there's buffers and all sorts of stuff, and and it's important for us to look at the whole district. And and I think that is what we're trying to do is look at the whole district. What are the benefits? What are the the potential drawbacks? You know, and it's not easy because sometimes there are winners and losers. Um, but that's in general, that's just the way it works, you know? So, um, but, you know, this was in on our radar from the very beginning, just to so that is, you know, out there.
Anyone else? Harry?
Yeah, the problem I'm having is if you can't find an old building somewhere, well, then you can't do anything. Does that make any sense? Or plant anything else? Plant to a body shop or a a cake shop or? Anything? It doesn't make any sense. Why should you have me forced to go find some old building somewhere in order to do what you want to do? It just, it just doesn't make any sense to me. If that makes any sense.
Anybody else? All right, Cot, last time, all right?
Sorry, okay, okay. All right, so I honestly, I don't think that they're a hazard as competition across the street. You know, I've always thought that the more retails, the better, the more. Revenues that flow into the city, the better, but that's not the issue that I'm actually having. It's it's. The issue I'm having is what is the real plan for the highway business? Um, what do we actually want there? Are we going to put a bunch of manufacturings there? I mean, it's it's one thing to have one manufacturing on the left and then another on the right, another one up the street, another one further up the street. I mean, what is it going to be for the highway business? Are we going to have a bunch of storage sheds? Are we going to what? I mean, how's that going to draw? You know, um, others from different communities to visit here to even, uh, want to support our local. Small businesses or or local retails or anything on that strip. So, I mean, my biggest concern is is. How would it impact and affect? The future plan of highway business?
All right, thanks, Cot. It's been very helpful having your input.
Hey, Jeff, um, I I, you know, I don't know where this is going, but I mean, if we do end up having some more time with this. Is there a way to to like have a a pretty coherent idea of what three acre parcels exist in highway business?
Yeah.
I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Um. Yep, I think we could put together, I mean, there's not a lot, so in, so I could pull that data together. I can't do it now while we're on on this call, but I think that's fine. Um, to consider or, you know, I think it relates to. The applicability of putting these under 8.1, the planned business development.
Okay, Jim?
I. I don't know if you're going to accept it, but I would like to make a motion to continue this, but before I do. I'm wondering what dates you might or date you think.
Well, we we had set August 18th as our emergency backup.
Six o'clock?
I I I guess so. I guess. We are, it it is.
In that case, don't we have a meeting already scheduled for that, though?
It's a Tuesday, Chris. We have a meeting scheduled every Tuesday.
Just add this to that Tuesday agenda?
I actually don't think there is an agenda for the 18th yet, is there, Jeff?
No, it it, the 18th was going to be held for, you know, there is a small chance we could get regular planning board business that. Would have to be scheduled after the joint hearing, but as of right now, there's no new applications, so to speak, for the 18th.
A motion to continue. The public hearing for section 10.10 to allow cannabis cultivation, manufacturing, research and development, new buildings in the highway business zoning district to August 18th at 6 o'clock.
I'll second it.
All right, voting in favor to continue to the 18th of August. Jim Zarvis?
Aye.
Harry Schuman?
Aye.
Brenda Salyer?
Aye.
Austin Sanders?
Aye.
Chris Cockshaw?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
All right, I guess we have to do that for us to, all right, motion to continue to the 18th.
I'll second that. Tom, how do you?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is 2-0. We're good.
All right, um, so Jeff, you're going to figure out about three acre parcels in the highway business zone? And maybe we'll take a closer look at how that. Language adopting this, whether that's a qualification or not. Jim, you got something else?
I just want to thank Cot and Mr. I wasn't quite sure, maybe Mrs. Cernak. I I heard a few voices there, so I apologize if I'm not getting that specifically right for coming. You'd mentioned maybe inviting other people. I know that's not part of our process here. But I certainly personally would love it if you would, you know, communicate to anyone that you know and bring more here. More voices will only help this process, and I'm very grateful for everything that you said here tonight.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All right, Jeff, do you understand? You've got everything you need to prep for the 18th?
Yeah, yep, I think that that's clear to me, so I appreciate that.
All right, perfect. Uh, I will take a motion to adjourn, I guess.
I motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Jim?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
All right, well done, everyone. Lots of work tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jesse. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks.
Uh, Jeff? You hear me?
Yeah.
Um, hey, just a quick question. Did you get an email from Hans? Are you able to meet tomorrow?
Yeah, I, yes, I need to, um. Yeah, he asked which which place to meet, right?
Yeah, like Burt Street or something?
Yeah, where's that?
Uh, it's right off Hendrick, right across from the sign.
Okay, that's what I I'd like to meet down there. And then, yeah, I don't know if I'll be able to walk the whole site with you guys, but I just want to see that lower area.
Okay.
In particular. Yeah, so, uh, yeah, that's a good reminder.
It was like 3 o'clock or something?
Yeah, the time works, and I just forgot to reply back to that.
I'll 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 let him know.
You'll do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have enough on your plate.
Yeah, my plate. Yeah.
It's overflowing.
It is overflowing.
Yeah, all right, thanks, Jeff. I'll see you tomorrow.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, bye.